All right. All right. The Monday, July thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at six P. M. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And city clerk, if I can get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanley.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Otte.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Here.
Mayor, mayor.
Here.
All commissioners are present. Brings us to approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Otte.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements for this evening. That brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. As a reminder, the public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when giving public comment. And just approach the center podium. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Hello. My name is Jean Whitman Shelby. My address is fourteen Northwood Lane in Marquette Township. I'm here tonight to share some history and to provide information to the commission as you make your decision regarding further restriction of vehicle traffic at Presque Isle Park. Peter White was one of the original settlers of Marquette. He was a businessman, a philanthropist, and a politician among his many other roles that he excelled at. He served as park commissioner for over forty years. In this capacity, he lobbied Congress to turn over Presque Isle Park to the city of Marquette to turn it into a public park. White's second great-granddaughter, Joan Maxwell Reynolds, daughter of Phyllis and Maxwell Reynolds of Marquette, and a dear friend of mine, this is her scarf, was afflicted by polio at the age of three. Joni and other able people who would never have been able to walk around the park, nor would our increasingly elderly population. I strongly suspect that Peter White, whose life work was one of generosity, would not approve of restricting vehicle traffic. He would want his granddaughter to be able to enjoy the park as well as the aforementioned people. Marquette County has seventy-five-plus hiking trails. The following is a partial list. North Country Trails, forty point nine miles. Blueberry Ridge, eleven point seven miles. Gorge, our doctors and ground loop trail, three point nine miles. Silver Lead Trail, two point two miles. Pioneer Loop, seven point six miles. Collinsville Cut, one point two miles. Wildcat Trail, five point two miles. Yellow Dog River Falls, two point zero miles. North Marquette Loop, seven point one miles. Easy Peasy No Quamanon Loop, one, two point one miles. Wetmore Landing Shoreline Trail, four point eight miles. Morgan Creek Loop, eight point four miles. Schwemwood Park, two point five miles. Vilmetti Peters Conservation Reserve, two point eight miles. Nokie North Trails, thirty miles. Nokie South Trails, five point five miles. Forestville Dam Falls Trail. Marquette Mountain Loop, three point six miles. NMU Trailhead, the Fit Strip. Wetmore Pond Nature Trails, six, three point six miles. Forestville Trailhead. Shoreline Red Pine Bearback Trails, seven point six miles. Benson Overlook. Carp River Falls, Hogsback Mountain Trailhead, three point three miles. Hope's Fall, Sugarloaf, one point four miles. Bog Walk.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm gonna have to cut you off. That's three minutes. Thank you. Do I have anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Jim Shelby, fourteen Northwood Lanes, Marquette Township. I guess I'm obligated here, so anyway. Harlow Lake Trail Summit, one point five miles. Little Presque Isle Trailhead, three point one miles. Iron Ore Heritage Trail. Echo Lake Nature Preserve. Blueberry Ridge. Chocolaté Bio Nature Preserve, point six miles. Elliott Donnelly Wilderness Track. Pecking Rocks Park. Bad Dog Loop, two point six miles. Morgan Falls, two point eight miles. The point of trying to get across to the fact that there are lots of options for people that are out hiking and also, by the way, people that are riding bicycles and so on. What I wanted to address is when my father, who was, when he was visiting, was eighty-eight, enjoyed very much when we would go to the band show for the band concerts and also to be able to drive around Presque Isle and sometimes to get off and go take a look at the lake and so on. And, you know, I think, I think the city has done a pretty good job with their accommodation right now, where they have sometimes it's closed off for people that are walking, sometimes it's open for people that are driving around and so on. It's an interesting accommodation. I understand there's a problem sometimes with personnel to close things off back and forth and so on. But I think it's important to note that the city has an obligation for, an accommodation for, with people with disabilities and people that are not able or not in the condition to ride bicycles around or run around or walk around and so on. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, please. My name is Kathy Ruprecht. I live at four twelve Taylor Road in Gwin. I'm here to, this evening, to also address accessibility to automobile use at Presque Isle Park. I grew up on the shoreline of Lake Superior and spent my summertime at Presque Isle. I learned to swim in the pool, ate snacks at the island store, went out for storms to watch the waves at the break while I know the island features well. But there is a feature of the island that when you close it is not accessible to residents of the community who are unable to walk or to ride a bicycle. And that is the backside of the island, which is the canopy of forest. And that canopy of forest is very unique in our community, in our city of Marquette. There's nowhere else where someone can go and stand, well, or ride in their automobile and be totally enveloped by a canopy of trees like that. The sensation of being in the forest and surrounding by the enormity of the woodland around you is quite unique. And in Japan, they call that feature forest bathing. It produces calmness and there's much research to promote for people to be able to spend time in a forest. As a retired physical therapist, I've worked with people in our community who lack mobility in consulting with my colleagues on their opinion regarding loss of accessibility to those of us with disability within our community to the island. The word that came up is devastating. The park, especially in the early evening hours, is often when it's accessed by those of us who are older because we often are dependent then on rides to go and explore the park if we're elderly or disabled. And the early afternoon or late afternoon and early evening hours before and after dinner are the times when one would go and enjoy the coolness of that canopy of trees on a hot summer day or to experience the sunlight sparkling through the leaves as it shines on you or to hope that you might see a deer crossing the path. So yes, the island has many features and many are accessible through the front part of the roadway, but it's that back that's, that's so important for those of us that need the experience of being in the woods and having our forest bath. So for that reason, I ask that you please consider keeping the roadway open for all to use. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Rum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. I haven't slept for three nights. This is the most important issue I've ever brought to the commission. This is for the heart and soul of Marquette, Michigan. I don't exaggerate. I don't speak with hyperbole. I had to leave Marquette, like so many of us had to leave, to find work. I spent eleven months in Cincinnati, Ohio, and every night I went home and as I was walking my dog, I thought, if I could just ride around the island, everything would be okay. Anybody I know who's left or had to leave home, the first thing they do when they come back is go out to the island. And the last thing they do before they had to leave is go out to the island. And most of the time, you don't have the time to walk or bike. But say you wanna walk or bike. A colleague of mine, my age, and I went out to the island on Sunday. It was gorgeous. It was just crawling with people and life and joy. And it was full of people. It was full of vehicles and it was full of bicycles. And there wasn't one point in the walk where there was any problem. Somehow, somewhere, somebody got the idea that if you allow someone in a motor vehicle to go to a park, that that's wrong. And the fact is, Peter White, if you read that history that was so eloquently suspected, long before there was the island, he arranged for the bridge across the dead river and then he couldn't get the city commissioners, I can't imagine why, to foot the bill for a road around the island. But he found the money to build the first road because he envisioned people going out there to drive around it. And in terms of pedestrian traffic, there's the old road. And we counted about two-thirds of the way around the island, you can travel safely as a pedestrian on the old road, including between Sunset Point and the Blue House. So all of the arguments that I've heard about, oh, it's not safe and it's not right and we're really moving away, they don't match reality and they don't match the history and the culture of this town. You have no more important decision this year than to reopen the island road to everyone on Monday and Wednesday night, which was the decision that could have accommodated the lack of staff without penalizing people who either have to ride in a motor vehicle or choose to. This decision is the worst decision made by any committee. It divided the people of Marquette into the ones who would be allowed to go around the island and the ones who would be forbidden, simply on the basis of the fact they either couldn't or chose not to walk. And that is why your job is to do your job and to represent the people of the city of Marquette. And this isn't gonna go away until it's fixed. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else?
Brian Miller, two seventeen Judy. I just saw something recently on TV about the electrification efforts in Marquette for vehicles. And I know that started some time ago. This is something I looked into and I'm not gonna get through it in three minutes, but, because at one time I thought getting an E V was a great idea and made a lot of sense. The more I looked into it, the less sense it made presently with the present technology. In the future, it'll make sense. I'm gonna rip through a lot of these reasons. I have more sub-reasons. The greater mass of the vehicle causes more energy use, more wear and tear on the drivetrain. Charger cost, charging costs, expensive to fix, expensive to insure. Big one here, less efficient in cold weather. Efficiency can drop by forty percent. Typically, in sub-zero temperatures, like a Tesla three will use five percent of its energy every night, keeping that battery from freezing. The opposite thing we're seeing in the southwest now and other parts of the country. Decreased efficiency in hot weather, over a hundred degrees. You lose efficiency of thirty-one percent. With both extreme cold and extreme hot, the battery may not even accept a charge. Limited range and all the range problems, range anxiety. Fewer charging stations, fewer hookups, availability of charging stations. There's been vandalism due to the copper cables. So in the event of a crisis, if the power is out, how do you charge a car? Find a battery life, the cost of replacement, ten to twenty thousand dollars or more. Unknown disposal costs of the battery. Environmental problems. These cars, one study was recently done, shown during the whole lifetime, including extraction costs. An E V will cause twice as much pollution as an I C E. That was eye-opening to me. Health and safety factors, spontaneous fires with lithium batteries, exposure to intense electromagnetic fields, people like police officers sitting in cars for long periods of time. Storage concerns do elevate fire risk. Police problems. Batteries run down very quickly with repeated accelerations in pursuits. They also overheat very quickly with repeated accelerations. Resale value after ten, ten years. Who'll buy an E V? I know a lot of people will buy an old Crown Vic, great car. Wait until the technology is a little better. NASA has come out with a battery now, not production, but lower weight, better operation in cold and, and hot weather. Charges faster, holds a longer charge, less fire risk. So never be the first to jump on board with new technologies. I learned that years ago with computers. You're always gonna pay more and you're always gonna run into more bugs. Thank you. That was the speed version of that.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That's gonna bring us on to our presentation for this evening, which is the former Cliff's Dull Property Transaction Environmental Considerations by Richard Barron, Volley Barron, and Metzger. Yeah. Special Counsel of the City and Tom Athens and Ryan Whaley with Trimedia Environmental Engineering. I'm going to kick things over real quick to our city manager, Karen Kovacs, before we get started, though.
Great, thank you. Just as a reminder, this is a presentation by our environmental legal counsel and consultants. You did a wonderful job introducing them. But I, this is coming after the state recently expressed interest in looking and exploring a land swap for the current sites of the Jacob Eddy Veterans Facility and the Cliff's Dull Site, the former Cliff's Dull Site. And we felt it was really important to inform the commission about specific factors that should be considered whenever we go into any property transaction, and especially one of this nature, in making sure that as we're about to enter into negotiations or continue with negotiations here, as we are, we really need to, to make sure that we are properly assessing any type of, any type of sale or transaction of this property, to make sure we understand what we're getting and, and not ending up with another contaminated piece of property. So I think that the presentation today is gonna be very high level, talking about a lot of due care obligations and things like that. But I think it's going to provide, what we hope to do is provide the commission with enough information to feel like you have all of the, all of the info there in order to make a proper decision as we come forward. Now, this is anticipating that we will be bringing a draft letter of intent or memorandum of understanding at a future date here in August that kind of highlights all of those things that we would expect and that the state is requiring before we go into an actual purchase agreement. So that will be coming at a later time. So this is kind of the homework before that and I think you're gonna find this very valuable and have some questions after that. So without any further ado, Rich, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So this discussion tonight, hopefully it's more interactive and less like a lecture. Tom Anthos from Trimedia and Ryan Whaley from Trimedia are both scientists that have been working on the Cliff's Dull Project and I've known them from other projects as well. The comments that I'm going to make would relate to whether there's a land swap or whether the city is just looking at acquiring either by gift or purchasing some other property. So these can be general in nature, but there might be some specifics associated with the Jacob Eddy site. The, the basic issue is that Michigan allows people to acquire property and then not be responsible for actually cleaning it up if it was contaminated previously. It's a change from what used to be called status-based liability. If you owned it, you were the stucky, to now more of a process that can be iterative and interactive where the obligation is on the person who's going to be taking that property or the, the entity in this situation to evaluate that property first so that you know what's there and then you just, if there is contamination above generic levels or above residential levels, then you disclose that to the state. There's a couple of things that are done in order to get there. So relative to the Cliff's Dull Site, as that was mentioned earlier, I was not representing the city when the city acquired that property many years ago. But for a number of commissioner meetings, there was always the question about, and I'll just generically paraphrase, it went along the lines of, why on earth did we possibly take that property on? So this presentation is intended to allow people to have a better understanding of assessing the property and what would be involved so the city commission can then make an informed decision about whether they are interested in accepting a piece of property that's being offered by a land swap and if so, what conditions they might put on it. So when we look at the two different types of environmental decision-making, sort of pre-steps here, we've got a phase one, which is more of a quantitative, sorry, qualitative assessment, generally just looking to see, is there the likelihood of something there? And in environmental speak, what they're going to be looking at is, you know, historical records, interviews with people, government records, and then determining whether there are recognized environmental conditions. And the reason that we have an environmental consultant on board for acquiring property and evaluating property before it's acquired is because if you have a qualified environmental consultant and they go through and do a phase one and they say there are no recognized environmental conditions, they might be right and they might be wrong. And we'll talk about in a moment how they work to try to be right. But if you, as the acquirer of the property, rely on a qualified consultant to evaluate that and they say there are no R E Cs, and you go ahead and acquire that property and it turns out that they were wrong and there still is something there, because you've gone through that due diligence and you've got records of doing that with a qualified consultant, then you still don't have to go ahead and clean it up. You still have due care obligations, but you don't have to go clean it up. And that's a, a pretty big issue. Then we get into the quantitative. So let's assume for a moment that you evaluate a piece of property and you say that there's R E C, or the consultant does. And I can tell you right now that a former hospital will have recognized environmental conditions. They would have had heating oil tanks, most likely. They would, may very well have had fueling. They probably had some kind of a maintenance shop. There's a suggestion that perhaps there was dry cleaning there, which would have used some kind of a solvent. All of those are likely to give rise to recognized environmental conditions. Plus, from the city's perspective, if you're going ahead and evaluating a piece of property, especially of, of this magnitude, you're very likely to want to get some type of testing done, some type of invasive study done, really no matter what the consultant said. And we know already, it's not just a greenfield, you know, that's just out in the middle of the forest land, which even there could have problems, but it's much less likely. So then we look at the phase two, the invasive environmental site assessment. So typically, you know, in the phase one, there's the walkthrough and they're gonna be looking for things relative to property-related liability. And I'm gonna have Tom talk in a moment, or Ryan, on hazardous materials that wouldn't be included in that. And then we get to the phase two and on that piece of property, the scientists are going to look at, where should we do some invasive studies? So for instance, you might have a pond on the property that looks a little funky. Maybe they would take a surface water sample. If you've got a stream on the property, maybe they would take a sediment sample if it's part of your property. If it's an area where they likely had a machine shop or a repair shop or underground storage tanks, they would probably take a sample. So if you think of the rig that they would most likely use to be a geoprobe, a hydraulically driven rig. When you consider the size of any particular site, and each boring is only gonna have about a two, two-inch circle, two-inch radius of area that's being sampled, which I learned when I looked online, is three point one four. So I imagine that's some relationship to pi. So a two-inch circle, as I recall, is a three point one four square inch area. So if you do thirty of those across the site, you know, and it's, you know, three square inches or so, you don't end up with very much. So when you looked at actually all of the soil that was sampled out of maybe thirty, you know, boreings, it's probably less than this size. So what that means is the scientists have to figure out, where do we check? And Ryan, do you wanna go ahead and talk about that, please?
Right, so, you know, if we identify R E Cs as part of the phase one process, we would target those areas. Say there was an underground storage tank on the site or an above-ground storage tank or chemical storage area, area of spills. Anything where hazardous materials were handled over time and there's, there's suspected misuse of those chemicals or mishap involved with those, we would target those areas, advance aboard at that location and collect some ground, soil and groundwater samples. Send that to a laboratory for analysis.
So when they're doing that, they're, they're checking for a couple of things. And it may seem somewhat rudimentary, but, you know, they do an olfactory analysis. Does the sample smell? Because if you put a boring next to an underground storage tank or a former storage tank and there's been releases, either spills and overfills or leaks from the tank, that soil will definitely have a petroleum odor, at least ninety percent of the time. So that's one of the things that they do. It's, it's more of a. It's more of a, yeah, okay, it looks dirty, smells dirty, is it dirty? And then they would send it off to a lab. Because even then, they need to check to find out, how does that level compare with state criteria? And surprisingly, sometimes samples that don't smell are above, and sometimes samples that do smell are below criteria. And really, when you're above that criteria that says you're, you know, a contaminated site above residential, you are then a facility, and you get the opportunity to go to the next step, which is the BEA, the baseline environmental assessment. So the scientists go ahead and they put together a report, they analyze what's there. And this is really just for the underlying site conditions environmental, not inside the building unless you had abandoned drums or things like that, but in the soil, in the groundwater. They do the BEA, and that's outlining to the state, here's what we found, and here's where we found it. You don't have to do the full-blown plume characterization. So, you know, you might remember from other presentations, you've got a source over here, and it's going through the groundwater and it's moving down gradient. You don't have to go for this purpose, you don't have to go and characterize exactly where that plume is and where it isn't. You simply need to identify that it's there. But you want to do a good job, because you want to make sure that you are evaluating and getting a good handle on all of the types of contaminants that might be there. So then when you send this into the state, you're able to say, hey, this was all there before we took possession of the property, or within 45 days after. It's not us, it's the prior owner. So they go ahead and do that. Tom, would you talk for a moment about some of those ongoing things that the Phase One and the Phase Two don't pick up?
Sure. Thanks, Rich. As part of the environmental due diligence, you know, you do, you look at soil, you look at groundwater, you look at historical operations. But the building itself, and the property itself, structures on the property, can also contain other materials that aren't covered under an environmental due diligence, typical environmental due diligence assessment. And that would be things like asbestos, that's specifically, you know, not a part of the Phase One assessment criteria. So you have asbestos, you could have lead, cadmium, metals-containing paints, PCBs and light ballasts, you know, there are a lot of other things in a building, in a structure that aren't captured in this part of the assessment, but should be a great consideration as you decide on whether or not you want to take this piece of property and address that in your plans going forward, whether you're demolishing the structure, or whether you're reconditioning it for reuse, or, you know, waiting to pass it on to somebody else that's in the picture.
Those considerations are important, because they're not part of the characterization that you do to tell the state, it wasn't us, but there are obligations. With the absence of, if there were abandoned containers that were there, barrels, partially empty, partially full, you know, paint cans, things like that, you do have an obligation to get rid of those materials as a new owner on the property. But the lead and cadmium paint and things like that, that's not an obligation just by acquiring it. And I'll just segue just for a moment to a real short story, but very early on in my career, I walked in one day and I found a Federal Express packet, prior to email, on my desk, where a hospital client was looking to demo an old hospital that was abandoned at that point and wasn't being used. And they wanted me to take a look at it. And they had asbestos contractors that were getting ready to go ahead and abate the asbestos and they were going to demo. So I did a walkthrough in environmental site assessment, you know, of that property, and we found actual free mercury from where a spirometer had broken, we found compressed gases, we found just a boatload of chemicals, you know, evidence of underground tanks, and then we found asbestos-containing materials that were not friable at the time, meaning you couldn't crumble them by hand, but when they hit them with the wrecking ball, they would have become friable, and they weren't part of the plan to be taken out before demo. So needless to say, the abatement contractor wasn't really happy with me, the client was, and we got all that stuff taken care of before they took the building down. So those are really important considerations, and those costs can dramatically go up. You know, it kind of goes back to the, there's no such thing as a free lunch. So when you've acquired this property, you still have the do-care obligations. So basically, what that comes down to is, you can't make it worse, you've got to let the state on the property if they want to do something. But you also have an obligation to prevent people from being exposed. So for instance, you know, a do-care obligation, if you had really shallow contamination, say right, you know, right below the subsurface, or maybe even on the surface, is you'd have to make sure that there wasn't any dermal exposure, kids were eating the dirt, might have to be where people aren't drinking the water, things like that. Now, one of the, you've got to give notification to. So as an example, if you know that there's a lot of contamination along a sewer line, and I can talk at length about how that might happen, but you'd want to notify utility workers, and you file something, you know, in the title, chain of title, and you could also reach out further to let people know that if you're digging in this area, you might need to do further health and safety precautions, and to be alert to it. So that's part of the obligation that the new owner of the property has, even though they didn't cause the problem. And that would include, if you knew something was migrating off-site, to notify the neighbors as well. A big driver on some of these things, these are just further obligations, and there is a handout, and I'll mention that there are some handouts in the back, I think there's copies of the slides, which are brief, as well as some information off of the Eagle website, on do-care and site assessments and things like that. It's reasonably straightforward, it's some of the nuance that can really get into issues. So one of the big drivers here, and it's become a driver in Michigan and in other states, has to do with what happens when there's something in the soil or in the groundwater that might get into the breathing zone. And that's typically referred to as the vapor intrusion pathway. So if you don't have, and we've talked about this relative to Cliff Stowe, where a presumptive remedy at the Cliff Stowe site, if someone was going to build on it, would be to put down some type of a geomembrane, and to ensure that there was a good barrier there, so that any potential subsurface vapors were either prevented by the membrane, or ducted out into a different area, for instance, through a sub-slab depressurization system. So looking at the vapor intrusion pathway can be a real issue for a property owner. An example would be, if it turns out that there were some solvents in the soil, or petroleum in the soil near the building, and the city wanted to put a building back to productive reuse, as part of those do-care obligations, you might need to go ahead and put in either a sub-slab depressurization system, some kind of a venting system, ensure that the pavement was in good shape, ensure that there weren't cracks in the floor, things like that. Tom or Ryan, is there anything you'd like to add on to the VI pathway issue?
No.
Okay, all right. Toss him a softball, nothing happens. So when you have these do-care obligations, and the city has changed, or the state's changed a little bit, you used to have to submit a plan, and then they'd say, okay, we're going to approve that plan. Then they got away from that. From a discussion I was having recently with someone who's high up at Eagle, they may be going back to that, because they want to make certain that it's not by statute yet, but they want to be certain that people are actually following the do-care obligations. And the reason that's particularly important is twofold. First of all, as a property owner, you want to make sure someone's not exposed to an unacceptable level of something, just to be a good citizen, and particularly from an amicable perspective. The other part, which gets people's attention as much, is that if you're not following your do-care obligations, you can be liable for what's there. So, you know, if you're supposed to do it, you need to make sure that you do it. And all of these things can have known costs or unknown costs, depending on how carefully a property is assessed or evaluated, which is, you know, going back to the no such thing as a free lunch, someone offers you a piece of property as part of a land swap, you know, you may want it, you may not want it, that would be a decision for the city commission. But what you most likely will want to do, particularly so that you don't have later city commissions saying, why on earth did they possibly do that, is to ensure that it's been evaluated, and that there's an idea as to what you might need to do with this property in the future just to keep it, or what you might need to do to put it back to some other type of productive reuse, which could include demo. Tom, would you talk about some of those ongoing carrying costs?
Sure. We also, in our experience, have gone through this process with many different entities, private to public groups, and we find that if you have a, if you don't have a game plan for the use of that facility that is, you know, very structured, and you understand the carrying cost of that, folks can really get into trouble. If you have a structure that you need to keep heated in the winter, keep security on, keep, you know, the electricity to it for reasons, for safety reasons, or the building department won't let you mothball it, you know, there are certain reasons why you have these long-term carrying obligations, and that cost adds up very, very quickly, from the gas and the heat, and the electricity, and the security side of it. So just, when you go into a, when you go into a situation like this, you want to make sure that you're looking at all of the different places, from environmental to non-traditional environmental, like asbestos and lead, and the long-term carrying costs, until you can make your project a fruition, that, you know, you know you have that all wrapped up in it.
So that's particularly important if someone else was going to acquire the property as well. Because if you've got a piece of property, and you think it's just a gem of a property in a wonderful location, someone can just do a little, you know, paint and polish and make it good, well, they're going to have asbestos O and M, operation and maintenance issues, they don't have to abate it, but they would have to make sure that it's in good condition, or it's sealed up, so you're not exposed to fibers in the air, things like that. You know, lead and cadmium-based paint could be an issue for workers, peeling paint, depending on the demographic that's using the property, could be an issue for dermal exposure, little kids putting their fingers in their mouth, or maybe even some, you know, ill-intentioned adults, you know. So either way, just making sure that people aren't exposed to something. So there's a big gap between just taking a piece of property that didn't cost you anything upfront, and then what it might cost the city, or anyone, to get rid of that property, and what those obligations are. And one of the things Tom didn't mention would be if there's outside insurance that's involved, they may require that that building be conditioned, you know, air-conditioned and heated, sprinkler systems, you know, kept in good working order, things like that. So all of those things can be looked at by the city when someone is suggesting that you take property. And I'm not saying for a moment, don't take property that someone offers, and don't consider that as part of a deal, but ensure that you've kind of looked at the life cycle of that property and what might be involved. And so that's kind of the high-level view of environmental site assessments, and, you know, Phase Ones and Phase Twos, and BEAs, and things like that. And I would certainly welcome any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments at this point? Commissioner Larson?
Just simply, what is the timeframe for, you know, from, you know, Phase One to Phase Two, and what kind of timing would you be looking at if, you know, you immediately wanted to get into kind of that, as you suggest, maybe that deeper, that deeper study?
Sure. So that depends a lot on the consultant's lead time and how much information is needed. I know from working with TriMedi, they can work pretty quickly, especially since they've got a little bit of a heads-up on some property that the city might be looking at. But from a statutory basis, you've got to have your BEA done within 45 days, or at least your Phase Two done within 45 days. But so things can move pretty quickly. It's not a matter of months and months, but some of it can go on a parallel track, you know, in terms of asking for records, particularly in a situation, for instance, just as a random example with an old hospital building, where you know there might be some underlying environmental conditions, and you can kind of move forward into that. But it's a good point, it does take some time. Thank you. Sir?
Commissioner Otway? Do we know of any LKQ, like, I don't know, land swaps that have happened like this with the state? I know the state's done this, you know, with veterans' hospitals in the past. Has there been evaluations at those sites of former hospitals? So, you know, ultimately, we may know what we're getting into before we're even getting into it?
I'm not aware of specifics with other healthcare-related land swaps. I, having worked on some hospital demo projects and underlying conditions, I can tell you, you know, those issues that I mentioned can be drains on the property, you know, drains on the value of the property. But also, sometimes there are things that, and this came up in a particular situation, where our client demoed, had the building demoed, sold the building, and part of the purchase agreement was, if the state requires us to do something, we'll go ahead and do it. Because, you know, this was pre-BEAs and everything, we said we would take care of it. Someone bought the property, and to do land leveling so they could do what they wanted to do, they were going to have to take a bunch of soil off-site, there's no place to keep it on-site. That soil had elevated levels of metals, which would cost more for disposal than just soil that didn't have elevated levels of metals. And the person who bought the property was saying, hey, you know, you need to pay for it. And we said, no, that's not what the deal says. And they, you know, they went away. They dropped that. But my point there being, that there can be other things that are cost drivers, you know, that wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily know, for instance, until after demo and things like that.
Can I ask a question?
Unfortunately, ma'am, right now it's just the commission. Commissioners, do we have any other questions?
I'll take a shot at this. I've got, this is a really good information, and I have all kinds of things going around in my head, and I'm not really sure what's going to come out of my mouth at this point. I think I'll probably be looking at this video and thinking a lot more about it in the future. So I'm thinking about, in our particular case, we're looking at the VA taking over the Cliff Stowe property, and the potential for the VA, the land swap for the current. So I'm curious about the liability, and some of this is for the public, just so that we know, if the VA takes over the Cliff Stowe property, what liability will the city be left with? And on the other hand, if the city takes over the current VA facility, what liability exists for the city? If you could help us with that, that would...
Sure. Those are really good questions, because it kind of bookends it. And it's really a matter of negotiation. Because right now, the city is a liable party for certain aspects of contamination related to the Cliff Stowe site. But there's not a deal done yet relative to the Cliff Stowe site. And we'd spoke about in other meetings, getting rid of the asset but still having ongoing obligations relative to Cliff Stowe. And I know the commission is going to evaluate that carefully as part of any letter of intent, whether they want to divest of a piece of property and still have some ongoing liability. As to the second part of your question, Commissioner Davis, it also depends on what's negotiated. If it's just, here, take this property, and there's no extra obligation that's put on, then assuming that the Phase One, Phase Two BEA, if appropriate, process is followed, then the municipality would have the same type of liability that, you know, that I would if I wanted to go buy the property. You know, I'd have the do-care obligations, you know, all of those types of things. So in order to temper that a little bit, one of the things that can be done, both, there's two parts. There's both the liability part, which you raised, but there's also the cost part that we spoke about here. And so those can be considerations as to the terms under which the city would be willing to accept a piece of property. An example would be, okay, yeah, we'll take it, but only if X, Y, and Z. And you can hit on some of those things that we spoke about tonight.
Yes, and I, that was one of the things that struck me as you spoke about the, just the cost of keeping that property before it's demolished. And I'm watching our old hospital, and I see the lights on, and I see the heat on, and I see all of what's going on there, and I know there's a cost to that. So that hit home with me when you talked about that. You know, you also mentioned something about contamination above the residential level. And so at Cliff Stowe, we would actually be putting residents there, and I know that there, at least I've heard that there's been previous deed restrictions on residential. And could you tell me a little bit about, do we know where that is, and can it be mitigated?
Yes and yes. When the city acquired the property, there was a deed restriction put in that limited the ability to use groundwater for beneficial purposes, so, which is not an issue, because it's municipal water there, it can be municipal sewer. And there was also a provision that it couldn't be used for, I think, anything other than industrial or commercial, without approval from DNR at the time, but it would be Eagle now. So it doesn't mean that it couldn't be used. That's where we get back to perhaps a presumptive remedy, which would be a vapor barrier and maybe a sub-slab depressurization system, because there, if needed, and it would depend on the actual engineering evaluation. Assuming, we look at this as to whether there's a completed pathway. You know, if I've got something sitting in that wastebasket that's all sealed up, you know, and it smells like crazy, but it's all sealed up in a plastic bag, and there's, the bag's not leaking, there is no completed pathway between me being exposed to whatever stinky stuff is in the wastebasket and standing here. Same thing at Cliff Stowe or any other site. They look at, and the state looks at, and the scientists look at, is there a pathway that's complete? So the vapor intrusion pathway would be the one that we were talking about earlier, and that's where you, you know, a presumptive remedy, meaning it's not been engineered yet, but it's likely to be the remedy that they would select and would be approved, would ensure health and safety by making sure that the pathway of whatever was in the ground isn't getting up to where people are. So, you know, a vapor barrier that prevents migration, these are engineered, it's not like putting a piece of cellophane down there, or Saran Wrap. These are thick mill barriers with sometimes, you know, other reinforcing material, and then sub-slab, or, you know, foundation planning, where they would put perforated pipes in there with peystone to collect any vapors that got into that location, and evacuate them out, so they're out of the breathing zone. If you don't have a completed pathway, you don't have exposure. And if you don't have exposure, you've minimized the risk. So those, that was... have exposure, you've minimized the risk. So those, that would be an example as to how potentially the Cliff's Dull site could be put back, or put to residential use upon approval from the state. And I will tell you, from preliminary conversations and just general experience, the state's not just going to say, oh, yeah, that's fine. They're going to look at the engineering, they're going to look at the science. They would look at whether it's a tried and true method of, you know, preventing, you know, to mitigate exposure and things like that. And Michigan has had the foresight from, you know, getting away from status based liability and allowing people to redevelop properties that were impacted. It's really helped urban areas by putting those properties back to productive reuse. But there's also a very robust technology, or a robust group of technologies that are out there as to how to make sure that there is no enhanced risk by, you know, minimizing any exposure.
Okay. I'm going to go in a different direction. I know we talked about timeline already. And I know that the state has done their environmental due diligence and as farther ahead than we would be if we were to accept the other property. And just, it seems like, do we have enough time to make that decision? Because I know that the state is anxious to move forward with the Cliff's Dull property. And it seems like there's a lot of steps before we would know what we're dealing with and as we accept the current VA facility property.
Sure. Well, you know, I don't think that the other property's officially been offered. We've certainly not seen a letter of intent, I believe, as City Manager Kovacs mentioned. So until we see that, we really don't know what they have in mind. But there's all kinds of conditions that could be wrapped into that agreement in terms of, under what conditions would the city accept the property after doing the environmental due diligence? As an example, would the city only accept it after the property was demoed? You know, after we'd done our due diligence to avoid that? If, if in fact, your engineering studies determined that the likelihood of being able to rehab that property, you know, wasn't going to be cost effective, or as I say another way, the juice wouldn't be worth the squeeze. You know, it's just would cost too much to rehab it versus starting from a clean slate. So there's all kinds of conditions that can be put on it. And without, you know, seeming irreverent, just because one party says, you got to rush forward and do something, doesn't mean that the other party has to rush forward and do something without adequate due diligence and making sure that the city's interests are protected.
Okay, one last question.
Absolutely.
At this point. You know, we've talked a lot about Eagle and state requirements. Are there federal requirements that we need to be concerned about?
As long as we're dealing with Eagle appropriately, on a site like this, it would be exceptionally unlikely that there would be any federal involvement. You know, there's, there could be situations, as an example, where we were looking at putting in a break well, or putting in a living reventment in Lake Superior where there is federal involvement. Because that's a different jurisdiction, you know, dealing with the Great Lakes and things like that, as well as state involvement. But on a, just a, a regular property transaction, there's nothing that immediately comes to mind about that. Now, I guess, I would say if it turned out that that was actually a uranium, uranium reprocessing facility in World War II that nobody knew about, and it was all done at the behest of the government, then there could be federal involvement. But based on what I know about just a regular healthcare facility, exceptionally unlikely.
Thank you. And as I said, this is really good information, and I, it gives at least me more thought to the concerns that we need to consider going forward.
Well, and thank you for the questions, because that does help flesh out the, the conversation a little bit. And it will allow the commission, I hope, to make an informed decision about how to go forward. And, you know, not only, you know, do they go forward, but what are the terms and conditions that the city would insist on?
Commissioner Stonehouse, and then Commissioner Otway?
So if I were to recap this, I would say we have a piece of contaminated property, and somebody else has a piece of contaminated property. It's like playing poker. We know what we have, and they know what they have, and we have to make a deal between the two of us as to whether we accept, we don't accept it. But essentially, we're playing blind because nobody has done a site acceptance on the potential of the old Jacob Eddy Hospital. So that's a wild card. We don't know what's there and isn't there. We can only make reasonable suppositions. But we do know what's on the Cliff's Dull property, of which we can also make reasonable suppositions. Interesting to see two parties get together and see if they can make a deal out of this kind of Texas Hold'em game I think they're playing.
Commissioner Stonehouse, I think that's a reasonably fair assessment. You know, we've not done, the city hasn't done a study on the Jacob Eddy location because it's not been formally offered. And so one of the conversations that Dennis Stackowitz and the city manager and I had recently was not going ahead and spending money until you actually have an agreement or something tentative. And that's what I counsel clients all the time, is, you know, why go spend money and be a volunteer if, if the results of that don't necessarily lead you to being able to make a decision that you want to be able to make?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Otway? Yeah, one of the biggest concerns, obviously, with this is, in the end of the deal, you know, ultimately, I worry that the city market's still going to have liability in this, the Cliff's Dull property. So I guess my question to you, is there precedent at all from the state of Michigan acquiring a piece of property from a municipality where they've taken the liability?
I'm not aware of that. But that just really means I'm not aware. I can't say it's never happened. But, you know, I would go back to anything's negotiable. And even if it wasn't an indemnity agreement, which is oftentimes a barrier with government, you know, covenant's not to sue, or an obligation to take on further steps, you know, there's, there's a number of ways where that could be addressed. Or pre-funding something, as an example.
Are we fair in assuming that they, I mean, that's, this is an assumption. But are we fair in assuming that since the state's coming to us with, with, you know, interest in this property, that they're probably a willing partner to deal with when it comes to the environmental issues?
I really can't answer that. I, I think that it's fair to say that there is interest. And when there's interest, there's an opportunity for some back and forth. You know, really, the, the perspective of what are you getting and what's it going to cost you, I think, are really key issues for the city. And I do appreciate the comments earlier about, you know, having a piece of property that we know is impacted, and there's certain ongoing obligations there. You know, one difference with the, the Cliff's Dull property versus Jacob Eddy is there's no grant that the city has gotten on the Jacob Eddy property, unlike for the Cliff's Dull property to use for cleanup. So, or remedial techniques or things like that. So I think there's a lot of issues that would need to be really worked out in any letter of intent. And this is, I think, a reasonably broad and, you know, and in some areas drilled down a little bit as to what some of those issues might be.
One final question, too. When it comes to the, just, obviously, you have knowledge when it comes to hospital sites, things like that. Is it fair to assume that the, the biggest issue possibly with any type of contamination in the building itself? Obviously, there's concerns with the ground, but would we assume that the cost would be more so with the building?
I don't know that we can do that, because we really don't know what's out there. You've got a different level of concerns within the building versus, you know, that's not migrating elsewhere. You would have certain costs associated with demoing the building or rehabbing it. You know, we talked about lead or cadmium based paint, asbestos containing materials, things like that. Depending on what those costs are, you know, when you sent, led a contract for demo, as I'm sure the city knows, you know, the demo contractors are going to look and say, what's the salvage value here? I can get so many tons of steel out of this, and this, that, and the other thing. So it, you know, usually, you're not paying 100% of the cost because there's some subsidy that you don't know about, because they say, well, I get all the scrap, and I can sell that and recoup some of my costs.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for the recap. Well, a lot of moving pieces. I guess I'm wondering if you could talk about, I'm always about timeline and process. What do you see as next tangible steps that we can look for as the commission and as the community for any of these potential outcomes?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the city manager mentioned that we had not seen yet a draft letter of intent, which I believe is on the state's plate, as it were, to provide to the city with what they are looking at having happen. And there's, so there's really nothing to react to. But just in terms, to answer generally in terms of process, once we get the letter of intent, I think we need to then dra, put together a proposed response, you know, okay, here's their offer, that's in the letter of intent, here's our response. Once we, once the project team puts together, you know, a proposed response, we would want to meet with the commission to talk about that, to, you know, so we can go back and forth over some of those issues, and then submit that to the state. The state typically doesn't move crazy fast unless they, you know, are, there's some type of emergency activity or things like that. So, you know, I know the city team has been poised to respond promptly, at least with our view of the world, once we get something from the state. And we don't have anything yet from the state to respond to. This discussion was really intended so that everyone can start thinking about what might we want to see in that draft response. And I think that we've probably give, between the three of us and the comments that the city manager made earlier, we've probably given you a lot to think about. And hopefully, we would capture, sum or all of those in our proposed response back. And again, nothing here is intended to say, do a deal or don't do a deal. It's really just intended to be anything that you're going to do, let's make sure the city goes into it eyes wide open.
Anything else from the commission? I have a question, I think, a little bit for more, the city manager. Curious what your thoughts are as far as, you know, if commissioners over the next week or two here kind of have thoughts on how they could foresee some of these things we've talked about here. Do you think it would be best for them to maybe send that to you directly? And you can have a better idea of where the commission's at? I guess, what are your thoughts on how we handle that part?
So certainly, if you ever have any more questions regarding this topic, there's always, there is always room to, to provide some answers. What I, I think what we've heard here are some really great considerations to take, take back and kind of include those into that letter of intent. And just, just so that we're clear, that letter of intent really assures that both parties have an understanding of basic terms of agreement and some commitment to a project. So I think when we talk about if we go down this path with a land swap, these are the things that we need to consider. And I kind of hear this is the same general concern coming out of the questions that, that were raised here. So I think that there's enough for a direction there. There's certainly, if there's any other questions on that, certainly send those on over. I think it's important to note one thing we didn't really mention, and I, I think that perhaps it's worth mentioning right now before, you know, Rich is, is done answering questions, is really looking at the fact that there is another side to this, too, of having interest in a land swap and having some, some ownership or some, I don't want to say control, because when the government says control, it gets a little squirrely, but some control over that old site or that former site, and making sure that that building, if it does have some environmental concerns at some point, does get taken care of, instead of having a risk of it staying there. And then all of a sudden, we end up having to partner with another organization or with the state on, later on down the road to remove it, or reuse it, or redevelop it. So I think that there's that other side there, too. So if there are questions about that, make sure we get those out here. But I think we have enough to go on. But certainly, if there are other thoughts that you have to share with me, please make sure that they're over here. And the commission would be going forward with approving that letter of intent if we can come to some of those agreements here at a later date. So we're very near future date. I say later, but as you heard, the timeline is a little bit tight. But we do, we will not sacrifice any, any opportunity to make sure that we're getting a decent assessment on that. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
One last chance here. Does anyone have anything? Okay. Do you have anything left that you want to?
I appreciate the questions, because it gives us a chance to, you know, segue on to different topics. And, you know, the presentation was intended to be like, here's sort of the framework, and the questions can bring out a lot more detail and also some real words, world scenarios as to what might happen, how might we respond. So it's, it's always better to have a dialogue. And I guess the, the last parting thought would be perhaps, you know, and this will be a discussion later, I guess, once we get to the letter of intent stage, it might be something for either a, a work session or, you know, talk about it in another city commission meeting, once we get to that point. And I, I really have no idea as to what the timing would be on that either.
Thank you. And Tom, Ryan, both good?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. So that brings us to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Otway?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, with that, that brings us to new business. We have one item tonight on new business, which is the site condominium develop request, The Bluffs on Forestville Basin Trail. City Clerk, if I could get background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 20th, 2023, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for the proposed site condominium subdivision to be called The Bluffs, which is proposed to have eight units located south of the terminus of Forest Basin Trail. The Land Development Code specifies a two-step review process in section 54.503B. The Planning Commission reviews the site condominium proposal and provides a recommendation to the City Commission. The City Commission's approval confers upon the developer the right to proceed with the preparation of a condominium master deed. The master deed will be reviewed by city staff to determine compliance with city ordinances and standards prior to final approval. And within a year after the draft master deed is approved by staff, the developer must furnish to city staff copies of the recorded master deed, a copy of all restrictive covenants, a copy of the Condominium Owners Association bylaws. Within one year of completion of development, the developer shall furnish staff with two copies of the AS-Built survey for review by the city engineering and zoning administrator to verify compliance with city codes and standards. After conducting the public hearing for this request, the Planning Commission approved the following motion. It was moved by S. Lowry, seconded by K. Clegg, and carried five to zero, that after review of the site plan and the supplemental documentation dated May 23, 2023, and the staff report for 09-SPR-06-23 and 01-CSD-06-23, the Planning Commission finds substantial compliance with the City of Marquette Land Development Code, section 54.1405, and section 54.503, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 09-SPR-06-23 and 01-CSD-06-23 with the following conditions. Condition one, the submittal of an amended site plan to meet staff original and additional comments. And condition two, that the master deed include language to the effect that limited city services are available to residents of these lots, and language to indicate that the provision of city infrastructure would be at the cost of abutting landowners and not at the general obligation of the city or its utility funds. Fiscal effect, up to eight single-family dwelling units in the proposed condominium subdivision would be added to the tax rolls. Recommendation, approve the proposed condominium subdivision. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
I recommend that we, I move that we approve the proposed condominium subdivision.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mayor Protam Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, Commissioner Hanley?
No. I think that the Planning Commission did a great job in reading their notes. That was very, their minutes, that was very telling. They went through it and did all of the things. So I think I'm very good with this.
Mayor Protam Davis?
I would just add to that remark and know that we've been, this project has been before us previously, so it's not something totally new.
Any other comments from the commissioner? Commissioner Larson?
I guess just a quick question. Does the motion also need to have the, the additional conditions put in it? Or does it stand as, you know, approving what, you know, they wrote, or what the Planning Commission had? I just want to make sure those, those two things are included officially. And so if we need to go back and make, you know, a slight amendment to have one and two added in there, that's just a question.
Excellent question. Actually, I'm waiting for Dennis to kind of just take a peek, because this is a two-step process to it. And so there is a step with the Planning Commission, and there is a step with the City Commission. And then also, there is that further, you know, condition to present the, the final or the draft, I think it's the first draft deed restriction. And so I'm just looking at Dennis on that one, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it would be safe if you'd amend the motion to say as presented by the Planning Commission.
Safe catch-all. So amended? So then my motion would be, I move that we approve the pro, proposed condominium subdivision with the conditions put forth from the Planning Commission.
And I will still second the motion.
Perfect. Do we have any discussion or comments on the amended motion?
Just that I had originally opposed this project, but I'm choosing to support the rest of the commission's decision and vote yes on this.
Anything else from the commission? City Clerk, I'm just double checking. This is not a roll call vote, correct?
It does not need to be.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, and that brings us to our second and final public comment session of the evening. As a reminder, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person, and please clearly state your name and fiscal address. Do you have anyone for public comment? If you'd like to speak, just approach, approach the podium.
Gene Whitman Shelby, 14 Northwood Lane, Marquette. Coincidentally, I retired from Jacob Eddy Home for Veterans Coincidentally, I retired from Jacob Eddy Home for Veterans as a mental health social worker. And what, I would like you to know a couple of things. The veterans home is surveyed every year by the federal government and by the state government. And when I say surveyed, top to bottom in every corner. And if there are corrective actions, it's public information and it's posted in the home. I also am sure that there has never been any commercial laundry going on at that facility. So that was mentioned, I think, as a potential. No, that's never happened. Every employee, every year, is in-serviced regarding anything you could imagine. And that includes materials that potentially could be toxic and how they are used and so forth and so on. It's a very safe place. I, I think, I'm not 100% sure, but I think that they have done asbestos abatement previously. Can guarantee you 100%, there's been no lead paint since forever. So basically, also, I, I happen to know Brad Slagel, who is, was the former commandant of the veterans home in Marquette and then later in Grand Rapids. He is on the state board of veterans homes. And they have done their due diligence about the property that they are hoping to acquire. And the builders and the architects have designed this building to minimize or eliminate any potential problems. That you can take to the bank, I know that. So, anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Want to remind everyone that this Saturday is the fifth annual Lower Harbor cleanup in Matson Park, starting at nine and ending at noon. This is the work of diver Don Fossbender and his team, who have done a magnificent job of educating the public, the garbage that was at the bottom of the Lower Harbor. Last year, the best comment I heard from a diver was you could tell they were making a difference because the first time he dove there in the first cleanup, he didn't see one fish. And now he has seen many, many fish. So if you are not busy Saturday from nine until noon, I myself am on the shore team, which means I usually pick up tires and throw them places. You don't have to have any special skills, you don't have to have any special equipment. If you happen to be a diver, that's great. If you happen to have a boat that can transport divers, that's great too. With everything happening in town this summer, it happens to be the same day that the Southshore Fishing Association takes the veterans out for fish, for fishing, so they are a little bit short of boats. So if you happen to have one, that would be a very good idea. Getting back to the elephant in the room, I've been in this commission room for five years now, and I have seen people get up and fixate on a subject. And I can name them by name, but I know you remember them. One person fixated on the behavior of the commissioners by name. He is no longer attending the meeting since the pandemic. Another person fixated on the Roberts Rules of Order situation. Again, he seems to have disappeared with the coming of the winter. Another group of people have favored this room with a diatribe about the use of fluoride in water. And like so many other people, they have said their say and they have left. I have not left. I've been in this room for five years. I'm running for a seat on the city commission this fall. I'm running against two of you who are on the city commission. I will stand on my record of support for this community. I have no hidden agenda, I can't hide it. Everything I, I care about is on Facebook. I'm not going away. And when I say I'm not going away, this isn't going to go away. This was a big decision to shut that road, badly done, badly communicated, and anything but a reversal of this decision is the wrong direction. And the longer you take to fix it, the worse it's going to get. Because I will make absolutely no hesitation of reminding the public the names of the people responsible for us not being allowed to drive around the island road. That's not going to change. And as more and more people realize that their access is being restricted, they're going to be reaching out. So that is the future that you have brought for yourself. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Ryan Miller, 217 Judy Street. I have no plans in run, running for commissioner, but I haven't gone away yet. Everyone's favorite issue, fluoride, I'd like to talk about that. Previous time, there was analogy made between beer and fluoride. It was actually a very good analogy. The implication was if you have a couple beers, you're okay. If you have more beers, you're not okay. And fluoride's kind of the same way. You get a little bit, you're okay, you get more, it's toxic. In that analogy, it kind of ignored the fact that for some people, no amount of alcohol is okay. Those people are fetuses. If you're aware of fetal alcohol syndrome, mothers should drink no alcohol. The same applies to infants and toddlers. So it's a perfect analogy actually for fluoride, that you really shouldn't have any, and the research, more and more researchers showing that. Second reason, even more important, is the distinction between concentration and dosage. Let me repeat that, concentration and dosage. You can have 0.7 parts per million in the water, and let's just assume that that is safe at that level. That's concentration. It's like the percent of alcohol in a beer. But you can't control dosage. You can't control how many beers someone drinks. Certain people consume a lot more water than others. At a city commission meeting, I enumerated all the various factors, a whole host of factors that can affect the amount of consumption. So, you know, this is a, this is a very important consideration. And if we take fluoride out of drinking water, it doesn't mean we can't provide fluoride for dental health. Again, virtually everyone's using fluoride toothpaste nowadays. It's almost impossible not to buy it. When I look around to try not to buy it, it's very hard to find it. Or we can do, as I mentioned before, like in Japan, where they don't ingest it internally. They have one of the healthiest populations around, they have a highly intelligent population, and they do regularly administer fluoride rinses on a periodic basis every few months with schoolchildren. It's administered by school nurses, we could have public health officials administer. It's less expensive than putting fluoride in the drinking water, it's less toxic, they're not ingesting it, they're only taking it topically to help the teeth. You know, this could be a win-win situation, so just, and, go down for fluoride. Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We're going to kick things off here with Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. Well, we, you know, summers, summers here, we're coming into August. Quickly moving through, we've got a lot of considerations before us from do-care obligations to consider as, as we move forward with this process to, you know, Presque Isle, Presque Isle Park amongst other things. But, you know, I look forward to, you know, continuing discussion on all, on all fronts. In addition to that, I just want to make a comment that, you know, this last week, all the commissioners had the opportunity to, you know, go through and, you know, do a, a tour with Mark O'Neill, with the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plants. And the, just, you know, I applaud him and the city staff on the, the great job that they do. And we got to see, you know, some of the ground being broken for some of the new facilities that are going to be taking place over at, at the wastewater plant. So lots of good work there and, you know, very pleased with the city staff and, you know, the professionalism in which they, you know, conduct, you know, business of the city. So appreciate it.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yeah, just wanted to say a quick big thank you to Public Works. As we all know, we had a heck of a rainstorm last week, right before our, our big event of Blueberry Fest, and we had Art on the Rocks, and the City of Marquette was just packed with people. And I heard many comments from people in the public talking about how great it was to see how quick they were able to get things kind of cleaned back up. There were limbs all over town, there was sand all over town. So a big thank you to them and their work does not go unnoticed. So thank you for them, once again.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Yes, I, I will also say thank you to Mark O'Neill and his staff for the really nice tours of the facilities with the wastewater treatment plant and the water filtration plant. It's, it was about a three-hour tour. I don't know for the rest of you, but Commissioner Otto and I, Ottoe and I spent about three hours. And it's important for us to spend that time learning their work so that we can make the right decision and understand when we're approving things for their budget that we are doing the right things. Also, I want to say thank you to those of you who came and talked about the Presque Isle walking versus driving hours. You are heard, and there will probably be more on this, the discussions will continue.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I echo the comments about the DPW for the festivals, also the Hiawatha Music Festival, DPW, the police department, fire department for being around. I know there were some events that they handled gracefully, nothing major, but when you get a number of people together, something's bound to happen and our departments responded really quickly. I appreciate that. Tours were great. I felt like I had one other thing, but it's escaping me, so it's not that important. Thanks all.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Couple of comments if I can. I've been on 12 years. 12 years, we've had controversy of close the park to walk-in, close the park to cars, split it between them, a constant movement of whatever that split should be. I don't know what the right answer is. I really don't, but I'm, I do look forward to seeing some recommendations come out of the Parks and Recreation Committee to see what we might be doing to fine tune it. But it's a constant yin and yang of what's best for that little hunk of land that we're loving to death. And for anybody that thinks that old highway is going to be there long enough to do much with, hang on, because erosion is striking the island too. So the island is getting smaller, it isn't getting bigger. But everybody wants a piece of it that they can cherish, and indeed they should. So just, just bear that in mind. Other item would be, you know, we've got this funny white building down on the water. It's a big one down there, right on the corner, kind of before you get to the lighthouse. It's called the Coast Guard Station. Coast Guard Station Marquette is responsible for everything from Huron Islands, way to the west of Big Bay, to Granite, rather, to Grand Marais, nearly to Whitefish Point. That's their patrol area. And this weekend, they rescued five people from a burning boat off the pictured rocks. So every time we look at that little white building standing on the water, understand what a tremendous asset we have for our own safety right in the harbor of Marquette. And I do remember when they were building or getting ready to build a new station, there were people coming into this chamber telling us we shouldn't let them do it because we don't need it. So again, when we talk about people that may come in and talk to us, understand it is a wide swatch of thought that this commission is, is exposed to at any given meeting. Lastly, this week marks the 157th anniversary of Marquette Harbor Light. That little red lighthouse sitting on the hill, that is such a key part of Lighthouse Park, 157 years old this week. And certainly an iconic building to the City of Marquette. It is in fact the oldest building in the City of Marquette, other than the old Burt Cottage down towards Marzidot's. So it's really a critical part of our history. And you can look at this a little differently too, because if you're reading the papers, you're reading a lot once in a while about placemaking, how some community has received a million dollars to put a placemaking project in. And a placemaking project is something that you build, everybody will love, and they'll remember and always come back to, simple words. We live in a place. We live in a place that's filled of places that were already made, the lighthouse that people remember, downtown, the dome, Presque Isle Park, all of these things that people that are here and leave and come back cherish and they remember. And we are so blessed by having so many of them. Thank you for the time, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley?
Mr. Ramble?
Everyone has done a very good job of saying everything today, so I'm good.
I kind of was going to say the exact same thing, so gonna send it us over to our city manager, Karen Kovacs.
Just a quick announcement that came out today. The compost drop-off, drop-off site will be closed tomorrow, and the household rubbish site, drop-off site will be closed on Wednesday. We are performing some maintenance on that site or at the site this week, and will be done by the end of the week. So compost drop, compost drop-off will be back open on Saturday, and then the household rubbish site will be also reopened on Monday at the same location. So just a quick announcement on that. And also a reminder that this Wednesday is National Noon Out Picnic at the Police Department, kind of celebrating that national night out, but also noon out. And so our police department is kind of a meet and out, out in the, the parking lot and really kind of having some of this effort between law enforcement and the community and doing it in style on the barbecue. So I think our captains will be out there flipping burgers and offering dogs. So if you are free, please come on out on Wednesday, August 2nd, from 12 to 2. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And the time is 7:21, and we are adjourned.